March twenty second, twenty twenty one, Westlake City School Regular Board meeting. Call call.
Stole.
Here.
Craft.
Here.
Finuchin.
Here.
Wazinski.
Here.
Kierna.
Here.
Let's dance to the pledge of allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to acknowledge any visitors. We thank you for your attendance, whether you're here in person or whether you're watching on our web stream. Next, we've got the approval of the agenda. Any discussion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Call call.
Moved by Craft, seconded by Wazinski. Craft?
Yes.
Wazinski?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Kierna?
Yes.
Stole?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Next up is hearing of the public. Do we have anyone present? No one present? Okay, let's move on. Approve of the minutes. The previous minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty one, and February twenty second, twenty twenty one. Can I just have an eye from everybody? Any abstains or opposed? Minutes are approved. Next up, we have the informative reports and recommendations. The state of the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Stole. I really appreciate the board allowing us to go through our state of the schools during a board meeting, and Mr. Hopkins and I will forfeit our reports and just talk about the agenda items to make sure that we're respectful of everyone's time. And, you know, going through our state of the schools, March, April is typically when you would have a state of the schools presentation. And really fitting, I think important and important to have a state of the schools after a year that everybody's really been through and celebrate and recognize a lot that's happened. So I'm going to start my state of the schools with something we've been talking about as what we call our Portrait of a Lifelong Learner. And we did, I'll talk about it a little bit after the video, but we did have a video made by the Impact Group with a lot of folks helping out, and we'll be able to kind of see it in a moment. So I think I just want to start with that video and then build after that. So, Mr. Hopkins, if you can.
Hello, I'm Scott Goggins, Superintendent of the Westlake City Schools. In the Westlake Schools, our goal is to balance rigorous and robust educational programming with opportunities and activities that target the growth and talent of the whole student. This approach ensures our students are able to grow during their formative years and prepare for whichever future they choose. In preparing our students for the future, the skills we promote are just as important as the education we bestow. To identify those skills, we assembled a group of Westlake staff members, parents, and community representatives. This group engaged in a visioning process and established eight competencies that represent the long-term vision for the Westlake City Schools. This process led to our Portrait of a Lifelong Learner, a composition of attributes and descriptions intended to act as our North Star as we plan for our future and share our priorities with our families and our community. Thank you to all of those who are involved in this process. Watching all stakeholders work together for the good of our students exemplifies the pride the Westlake community has in our schools and the value placed on providing the long-term success of our children. Please enjoy Westlake's Portrait of a Lifelong Learner.
Integrity. A student with integrity develops empathy and social awareness. They listen to the perspectives of others and they contemplate problems through a variety of lenses while demonstrating the ability to take action for the greater good.
Globally minded.
A globally minded student will explore differences and diversity in the world. They will collaborate and work with others toward unified goals, and they will contemplate how their actions impact the world and people around them.
Resilient.
Exhibiting courage and strength in the face of adversity or stress are just some of the qualities of a resilient student. One must also show tenacity in the pursuit of goals despite the obstacles or challenges they face.
Emotionally intelligent.
A student with emotional intelligence possesses self-awareness and is able to manage thoughts and feelings with maturity. They practice empathy and understanding of others' perspectives and apply social skills to remain in tune with the feelings of others around them.
Innovative.
An innovative student engages in problem-solving and remains resourceful while thinking critically. They promote intellectual curiosity while seeking new ideas and solutions to contribute impactful changes for themselves and others.
Balanced.
A student who is balanced expresses a connection between physical well-being and the decisions that lead to a healthy lifestyle. They establish and maintain positive relationships and are able to organize and self-regulate the demands of daily life.
Communicator.
An exceptional communicator is an active listener who exhibits understanding. They formulate well-crafted and engaged responses rooted in well-researched ideas while effectively conveying informed perspective.
Purpose.
A student with purpose is committed to future goals and pursues them vigorously. Their life is a constant display of determination, and they make decisions based on self-fulfillment.
So I wanted to start with that today, Mr. Hopkins, and the next slide. Slide three. Where, when you hear integrity, innovation, globally minded, balanced, resilient, communicator, emotionally intelligent, and purpose. What was interesting is we had multiple groups. We had a large.
Hello, I'm Scott Goggins.
Yeah, here. I'm over here. But one of the things that, Liz, I think you were at the big group last February, and we had a bunch of a bunch of groups, whether it was writing this, reviewing this, a lot of people going through these eight attributes. And what was interesting is when we were writing these, talking about these, vetting these, we looked at it and said, boy, these would be great for our students because we're preparing them for a future that there's a lot of unknowns. Little did we know at that time that these attributes would actually be benefiting us in our near short-term future. As we've taken a lot of these and implemented them through what we've gone through for the past four years. And so I think it's just interesting on how that shifted. Well, well, next slide please. And what we then did, so last year was interesting where we had our shutdown in March, March twelfth, I believe it was when the governor came out and said schools are going to close as of March sixteenth. And we went through the end of last year. And it was really tough for everybody, not only for our staff, but especially our families at home. Because last year, when we looked at last March, last March, we knew we relied a lot on our families, and they really stepped up and helped us out. But we knew that was not sustainable. It had to change. And so this planning that we had at the end of last year, if you go to the next slide, and this is, it should start playing, but one of the things we did, and if you look the dates on that, this was in June, where we talked about preparing online, preparing to teach online, planning your course, student and staff wellness, organizing and building your course, and it goes into communication and other components. Our team came together and said, we need to provide structure. Because of the state that I think many times happens is that people focus on the tech skills without focusing on the structure of actually teaching online. Like they're just focused on how do I use Google Docs? How do I log in? How do I use Screencastify? But not taking it together and building something that was cohesive, because that's one big piece of feedback that we received from parents was if they have multiple kids in the district, they have multiple experiences. So as we were closing last year, again, and if you want to identify something inside our portrait, when you're looking at innovation and purpose, we knew we needed to be innovative, but we also needed, had to be done with a sense of purpose. So if you go to the next slide, please. But we didn't forget about the tech component of it. And so at the bottom of that module system that I showed you that's going on here and what is being scrolled through is we had professionals come in and be trained. And so they came in and we recorded the sessions. And then we did extended sessions, which is going to be the next session, section that would identify groups of students such as students with disabilities or gifted that could be a little bit more difficult to teach virtually. And then we had our staff that has, that built a number of skills during this time. All of those are recorded sessions with our staff teaching our staff. And some of those are going to duplicate themselves into each building and some are going to be unique to each building. But I think kind of it's important to look at because last year feels like five years ago. You know, it just feels like so much time has passed. But as we're looking at the state of our schools, I think we have to go back to that point in time and be able to kind of watch how we got from the end of last year and then started the building into this year. The next slide is some pictures from that. So we obviously had the students pick up all their books. We had teachers. I think this is Mr. Primrose doing a lesson from his kitchen. He did a really nice job kind of like bringing science into his kitchen. And then the different types of math that can be done by using the screens, the students' computers. So here's where we went to next. This was a situation where we received a lot of information over the summer, and it's represented there with the Healthy Restart Playbook. But we did receive a similar document from Cleveland Clinic. There was the How Department of Health. There was other states that we reviewed their documents to see how they were planning on reopening schools. And then we had to focus on, you almost had to think about every space that people inhabit during a school day, whether it's a classroom, a restroom, a hallway, a bus, you know, just, just everything that we would have to cafeteria. So all the different things. And so where, what we ran is then we went back, can you go again? We went back into our planning. This is our slide indicating planning, by the way. So every time we see this, I'm going to talk about planning. And one of the, so here's what we had to do. We had to balance physical safety, wellness, and instructional delivery. So the goal was to take the complex, complex planning in order to do all of those things right and participate in that. I mean, there are a lot of wheels turning to create the schedules, the areas, and everything for that to happen. But then it had to look easy because for the end user, it couldn't stay complicated. So it was trying to think through all of those components and then have it turn into a a very usable product for people and a flexible product for people as well. So one of the things that I wanted to mention about last year that Kathy actually talked to me about before the meeting when we were talking about it is, you know, not only at the end of that year did we do all that work for the modules and do that, but there was a lot of work done to identify what was taught in person, what wasn't taught at all, and what was taught virtually. Because Kathy and I really spent a lot of time this year making sure that students don't have gaps. And one of the things we wanted to do is make sure that as we look to some sort of normalcy, we don't have people missing a year or something. And so that was important to us. So sorry about that. But going into, so what happened then is we ended up creating this three-model system. And it's one of those where a three-model system, you may look at it and say, yeah, everybody had an all-in, everybody had a hybrid, and everybody had a virtual. And that's true. But we do believe that there are some very unique aspects to each of our plans, starting with virtual. In our virtual plan, our students were taught by Westlake teachers, Westlake curriculum. In our hybrid plan, we would have students participating in their classrooms, live streaming on offsites. And so when you look at those components, and the other part, and another conversation Kathy and I had, is that we chose to offer our complete programming book. We didn't cut orchestra, we didn't cut band, we didn't cut choir, we didn't, you know, we didn't take the specials out there and chop them because it was difficult to do. You know, our folks figured out a way to do it. So we created this plan that was not only safe, but it was good, sound educational practices that was flexible. So if you have, if you're moving from the virtual plan, now, the virtual plan, I will say, is a little bit different from the elementary school where there's a separate virtual teacher. So if you were to come back into an in-person, you would have to change teachers, but you knew that going into it. But other than that, you really didn't have to change your teacher much. Maybe some balancing, but there wasn't mass changes of teachers for students who were looking to go from one model to the next. So it was very flexible. We were able to use it. And we think very effective. So next slide. And here are some pictures that I think is interesting, and I believe these are from our middle school. And you can see how the teachers really did a nice job, and believe me, this was mentally exhausting for them to teach in two locations at the same time at the level they wanted to teach. But what I will say, some stats, twenty-four out of twenty-six weeks, we provided the person instruction. I think that's, that's great. Twenty-four out of twenty-six weeks. In our hybrid, non-in-person days, we're still receiving live instruction. We maintain full virtual instruction, as I mentioned before, with our teachers. We established and executed an in-house contact tracing program with our nurses and HR director. We also did our own in-house vaccination clinic. I want to take a step back and talk about that for a second. Because this to me, and I will tell you about this, this thing for me, and I talked to some teachers about this, where when we were doing this vaccination clinic and planning for it, I would, it was, it was something that in my mind, I was like, okay, we got to get this done. You know, I want to, I want to, I want to control it because I want to make sure it's on a Friday in case there's reactions. I want to make sure the logistics are right. And so I wanted to get my hands on it. So we did it. And it became one of those things that I walked into it with one mindset and I walked out of it with a different mindset. So I started that first day on Friday, February twelfth, when we were doing our first vaccination clinic, with a checklist in my mind. You know, let's get through, let's get paperwork in, we got to get this, we got to make sure people get their cards, all the different type of things that we have. But when I left, I had a very different feeling, and I'll tell you why. When you walked in, and some of you actually did, and when you walked in, you were greeted by one of your colleagues. You were greeted by one of my secretaries or aides or office workers, and you were checked in by them. And then when you went to turn in your paperwork, you had more Westlake people greeting you. Then you got your vaccination. And then when you went into the rotunda to be monitored, to make sure you weren't having a reaction, it was our nurses. And then when we had what you would call extra doses, I don't want to call them that, but it's one where, you know, I think you get ten per vial, and then based on the number you have, you can end up having some extra doses. And they never want to throw away doses, you know, they, once they, once they thaw something out, a vaccine or a vaccine out, they want to utilize it, they want to get it norm, which makes sense. So we had staff members who had family members who were eligible and had health conditions that were on the standby list. So kind of watching that at the end of the session where people are bringing back, they're bringing their loved ones in to receive this vaccination. So just the whole part of it, what started as an exercise and a task became like us taking care of us. The secretary's checking folks in, you know, getting their paperwork together, nurses watching them, family members getting there. So it started off one way, but it really turned out to something when I walked, and when I went home that night. I felt really good about that, but for different reasons than probably when I started my day. So if you go to the next slide. So I talked about the Portrait of a Lifelong Learner, and this is what we had indicated is going to be, if you listened and heard in the video where I call it our North Star, kind of our visioning exercise to where along with our course catalog and rigorous content, all those different things that we offer, this is also going to be part of our planning, which leads me into the next slide, which is where I talk about our strategic plan. I use this slide for the strategic plan because it does have, you can see the children in the background, you can see our Educate for Axolins. You can see our branding of the WU surrounded by the eight attributes that we've discussed. And, you know, last year, I will tell you, I was very, very disappointed that we didn't finish the strategic plan. It was something where I felt like, you know, we didn't, and we didn't finish the portrait project completely. And I was very frustrated. You know, maybe I should have started earlier or a mess or something like that, and just frustrated it wasn't done. But sitting here today, I'm really glad it wasn't done because we learned a lot over this past year. And, and I, and I said this before, we were talking about the strategic plan, but I'm intentionally putting it in the state of the schools because I think it's a key part of our state of the schools, is now is the perfect time for a strategic plan. We've established a vision. You know, we know that when we open up more and more, there are going to be things we miss that we want to bring back. But we're also at a time when we've learned so many other things that there are some things that we're doing now that we want to keep. So to engage in that conversation and to have that planning is really exciting to be able to go into the strategic plan to do that. So one of the things that I put in and I just can't let go of is that focus on progress, not perfection. What, what I think, at least for me, this, this concept really helped me getting through the past year and a half that we've dealt with, keeping our eyes forward, establishing our vision, and pushing through our frustrations. This is what we do. And just the entire time, we maintained our priorities and continued to move in spite of the obstacle, obstacles. They were there. They were presented to us. We had them every single day. But we continued to move. We kept our progress going. And it just wasn't in academics. Go to the next slide. When you look at where we're sitting today, we look at facilities. And we look at, you know, what we did with Parkside, Hilliard, Dover Elementary School, softball, baseball fields. Todd's going to talk about finance, and he's going to talk about three different components, transparency, accountability, and value. When we look at our support groups, which I'll talk about when we get to there, and even our contents. In all of these areas, we didn't stop. We kept moving forward. And I really believe that's going to put us in a great position as we continue to plan for next year. I'll talk about facilities. And when, when the, just to kind of, for those who may be tuning in for the first time and haven't watched our board meetings, to be clear about our stake of ownership in Parkside, I'll call it, is Parkside was a property that was included in the land exchange for us to obtain the Center Ridge property in order to build our new elementary school. And we do have the option to purchase that back at a predetermined land-only cost. And so if we were to purchase it, it's, it's a good deal. It's something that, you know, we can get back on a reasonable rate. But the issue that we have is that it is owned by the state currently. And we are leasing it for a dollar a year, but we're leasing it, we don't own it. And we had a situation there with our air handlers getting moisture in there and creating mold that went throughout our air handling system. And one of the remedy for that is to obviously clean out the air handling system, but also fix the roof. And we were, when we started receiving our estimates, they were well over six hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in order to do that. The picture on the left I added because there's a couple of things you need to think about with your investment. You know, the structural integrity of Parkside is not very good. And you can see examples of that with the fracking that we have throughout the building. And then on top of that, you know, our thought was, well, we're renting, and you put a new roof on a place you're renting. It's like, you know, if you're renting an apartment and the roof goes bad, you call the landlord, you know, turn around and invest hundreds of thousands of dollars into the roof where you are. And so we had to make that decision on whether, how, what is the best way to, we think taxpayers want and be physically responsible. So we chose to move to Hilliard. Now, the good news for us, and you can go ahead, thank you. The good news for us is, back when I showed that planning slide, one of the things that we talked about when we were doing our summer planning is when you're in a situation where social distancing and physical distancing is key, you know, and you have the elementary schools, you want to go through your elementary schools and say, well, what if I want to activate some? What if I want to bring them online and create that physical distance and by utilizing properties that we already own? So we did look at that and we evaluated the buildings that we had. And this building that we're sitting in right now, Hilliard, was the one that we had talked about bringing back online for various reasons. We felt it can happen quickly and not at an extreme cost. So that happened again as we looked at revisiting a permanent home of our central office. And that's what we did. We now have made Hilliard Elementary School a permanent home of our central office. And you can see, the picture on the left was what it was, and the picture on the right is what it is. And, and you can see by simply like cosmetic paint, carpet, and different types of things like that. Now, there's more that's going to be involved in that. But, but as of right now, we felt that it was about four hundred and eighty thousand so far. How much are we into this? Right around there?
About five hundred thousand dollars.
We're into this, and when you look around at the shape of our report group here, it's, it's actually a really nice facility for us. At number one, we own it. And number two, it costs a lot less than what we would have with our Parkside. And then the long-term ownership that we looked at for this was when you do have to do major repairs, it's a smaller building. So the cost, you know, there's less square feet to manage and to repair. So we felt that, you know, as we moved, in the long term, it would be something that would be very beneficial to us. So the other thing we needed to do is raise the elementary school. That this is something, and it's the hard part with our buildings, where while we love them when they're not in use, if they, if they remain vacant and abandoned, they will deteriorate, they will get vandalized, we will have issues with them. So we are committed to the ones that we are, we are not going to use, we will bring them down. And so this is Dover Elementary School. To the right is a picture from last week. I went over there today. They made a lot of progress very quickly. It's kind of nice to see that field there. It's nice to see that trailer gone. I'm pleased to see that not there anymore. The next on our list will be Masset. We haven't discussed yet the timeframe on that, so. Put that in my presentation at this point, if it is next on our list, but that. The other project that we have facility-wise was the softball, baseball fields. You have the softball field on the left and the baseball field on the right. That is still a work in progress. We have more work to do there. But the work that has been done, we're pleased with. The backstop looks good. There's still some more work on there that's in padding, but that's, that's in progress as well. I will turn it over now to Mr. Hopkins to talk about finances.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins. As Dr. Goggins said, you know, this year has been a different year than, than in the past, and. As Dr. Godwin said, you know, this year has been a different year than, than in the past and it's been different in the finance office as well. So I'm going to take tonight and just go over more of our guiding principles, especially as we look at this year as the possibility of going into a levy campaign in November. So the three guiding principles of our financial office and the treasurer's office for, for me is transparency, accountability and value. And what do I mean by transparency? We want, we actively want people to be able to take a look into our finances and we want to encourage people. This is taxpayer money. This is public funds. We fully recognize that. Okay? And so we provide information. There's some available on our website. All of our board reports are quarterly reports or five-year forecast. All of that's loaded into a board docs. People can view it, review it, ask questions, you know, go through, dig into our finances. We also offer it through what's called the Ohio Checkbook. We're one of the public agencies in the state of Ohio that participate in Ohio Checkbook through the tre- through the treasurer of state's office, where you could go in and literally review all of the checks that we write, the expenses, what vendors are going to amount, things of that nature. As well as, you know, I always encourage people just to ask. We're willing to provide that information. In fact, in 2017, we were asked for a good amount of information through public records request from WEWS Channel 5. They did this with a member of school districts in Northeast Ohio. And based on how forthright you were with the information and responding to their request, they gave school districts throughout Northeast Ohio a grade similar like we have grades of ABCD or ABCDNF. We, we received an A from Channel 5 for our, for being upfront and forthright with the, the request. We want to be transparent. We want to get the information out in public. We want to share that so that they can maintain, we want to build and maintain trust with our community. This is $50 million plus that we're dealing with. We want to make sure we have that trust in the community as we go forward. We want trust with our community, with our stakeholders, with our families. We, long-term, we're asking our, our community to invest in us and we want to build that trust. When we look at accountability, accountability is obviously sometimes difficult to, to look at when we look at finances in a school treasurer's office. But one of the ways or a couple of the ways that we look at it is, you know, how we, we go through annual financial audits through the state of Ohio auditor's office. And for the past five years that I've been the treasurer with the district, as well as many times with our former treasurer, Mr. Pereira, who was very, very good as well. We've received the Ohio Auditor of State Award with distinction. This is again, we're not trying to throw up here and ask for a pat on the back. That's not what this is about. We're trying to show that, hey, we are providing all of the information. We're spending within the proper laws, within the proper processes that we go through internal controls. We want to show to the community that we're following the right procedures. Okay? Following the right practices to build and maintain that trust. Additionally, again, for the past five audits that I've been here for and many before with Mr. Pereira, we've received the certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting from our colleagues of the government finance, finance officers association. Again, this is a process of reviewing our CAFR, our comprehensive annual financial report. They go through and look at our report. Does it meet the standards so that we can communicate that with people? I fully understand, okay, and I'll be the first one to tell you, this is not, the CAFR is not something that most people are going to enjoy reading. Okay? But if you are interested and you want to dig deeper into our finances, it gives you greater insight. Okay? It's a annual financial report. Oftentimes you'll see it in the investment world as a perspective, you know, looking in and trying to get people to look at the finances of a company or in this case, our school district. The other piece is, you know, while we don't have necessarily a credit rating, we do get bond, our bonds rating. And we have a rating from bond rating agencies. We have two different ratings, one from Moody's and one from Standards and, Standards and Poor, S and P. We recently, just in the past few weeks, went through a ratings update at the request of Moody's as they're rerating a large number of districts across the country as they relook at how K-12 education works and the funding for it. And I'm very happy to report that we've maintained a very, very, very high rating of a AA1 with Moody's. Generally speaking, they're going through on these ratings reviews and downgrading school districts. We were fortunate and working with our municipal advisor, Mike Sincena, we've maintained that, that very, very high AA1. And additionally, we have that S and P rating, which is a AA plus. And that is again, very, very exceptionally high bond rating for both of those. So as we look at it, you know, to our, to our public and we try to communicate, you know, the accountability, we are accountable to our, the state of Ohio auditor's office, we're accountable to our colleagues, we're accountable to our investors. Overall, we're accountable to our community and we want to make sure we again, build and maintain that trust with our community. Really, one of the main reasons that we want to do that is, is because we want to communicate the value that we have in this district. Okay? As I've pulled information together, and we're going to see a lot more information over the next, you know, a few weeks and months as we go into a levy campaign. But we've pulled information together, not only the school districts that you see on the board here tonight, basically the school districts that, that touch Westlake in one way or another. We've also reviewed through public records, every school district in the tri-county area, Lorraine, Medina and Tahaga counties. Those are 52 school districts. Now, as the board knows, but I'll repeat for the community, because of the pandemic, ODE suspended getting grades, report card grades for fiscal year 20, which ended on June 30th, 2020. They've also suspended it for fiscal year 21 that we're currently living through. So we can only go back for the report card grade. The most current grade is fiscal year 19. And Westlake City Schools was rated A by ODE for fiscal year of 19. Additionally, there were only 11 school districts out of those 52 in the tri-county area that were rated A. Every school district, every homeowner, regardless of where you live, we measure taxes and you'll see that up here on the board here. We measure it in mils. And for the purposes of this graphic, we're looking at our residential effective mils. When we look at our, when we look at what a millage, it's a way of measuring taxes. And the easiest way to put it is one mil will cost a homeowner $35 for every $100,000 of valuation of your home. That's, and your valuation is set by your county auditor's office. So one mil, $35 for $100,000. In Westlake, because we have effective mills, we take that 33.64 residential effective mills and we multiply that by $35 and it comes to approximately $1,177. That's what of your property taxes, if you had a $100,000 home, comes to Westlake schools. Obviously there's other property taxes that you pay, but this is the portion that goes to the school district. And when we look at the other school districts, I've also included any millage that goes to a joint vocational school. Because again, from a taxpayer's point of view, that's still going to education or funding of a K-12 school. So when we look at this, we also want to look at what the average home price is for Westlake. Because I know a lot of people, well, my home's not worth $100,000. $100,000 for years is because it's an easy way to multiply it for other home values. So you double it for 200,000, triple it for 300,000. But the average home value in Westlake, according to the county for last calendar year, 2020, is 281,200. So the average school district taxes or the Westlake taxes that we receive is $3,308 approximately for the average home value in Westlake. Now, when we look at all of these other school districts, you know, let's look at that saying, let's go back to per $100,000. Because again, if we took our home in Westlake and we literally lifted it up and put it over in Rocky River, what would it be if it was maintained the same value, that same $100,000? Okay? What would our, what would give you paying in taxes in Rocky River? So remember, Westlake, 1,177, under $1,200 a year. Rocky River is 1467, $1,467. Bay Village, $1,768. Fairview, $2,182. North Ridgeville, $1,334 and Avon, $1,543. When we look at our tri-county area, then Lorraine, Medina and Tahaga, we have the seventh lowest effective tax rates in the tri-county area. Out of those 52 school districts, the seventh lowest. I do want to point out on a side note that two of those districts that are, that had a lower rate than us also have a school district income tax. So they're really not lower than us when you add in the approximate millage that they would get from their income tax. Because again, this is all publicly available. So when we look at it and say, we're providing that, that, that grade A, according to ODE, school district education, we're providing all kinds of opportunities. Dr. Godwin is very, very right, especially as we look at this past four year. We tried in every way possible, provide a, the same opportunities for our students. Okay? Where many school districts reduced what they were offering. Okay? And we were able to do it without significantly adding staff or, or added costs. So it's the value that we bring to the community. We're going to have more information available over the next few weeks and months. This information that I've talked about tonight specifically with the, the tax rates, I have a spreadsheet that will make available for our website so people can get access to it. You're always welcome to email and, and call me. Ultimately, what I'm asking for is for our community to invest in us. We're looking as we go into a levy campaign, our community has been very, very gracious and has invested in our facilities. We're going to be asking our community to invest in our education, invest in our students and in the future of our students. And that's why we want to focus on those three areas that transparency, accountability and value. And we believe that we're doing that for our community. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Hopkins. I have two other areas I'm going to cover before I close. And one, our, our support organizations and we cannot offer our students what we offer them without these organizations. And this was also a hard year for them as well. And when I, I look at the, the different organizations on our screen and on your screen at home, like when I think about it and the PTA, the PTA typically, they're in our buildings constantly. You know, in, in a traditional year, you walk in and you see parents in there. It's the parent teacher association. So you, you see parents with the teachers quite a bit. It's hard to do that when you're not allowing visitors in. And when I look at my music boosters and my athletic boosters, the struggle for them is whether it's a game or a concert, having only a percentage of those who can attend. So you're dealing with attendance issues, you're dealing with engagement issues. So there's a lot of issues that, that all of these organizations have had to face, but they've overcome. And that's back to that resilience. So we're, we're still moving forward with these. The Westlake Educational Foundation, this is an organization that's actually shut down officially, I think in 2015 and probably unofficially prior to that. It came back online this year. We, during this time, we brought a new organization back from hibernation. And did I run? Organization from hibernation. But, but the point is, and, and not only, not only that, but all of these organizations came together for one common fundraiser, thanks to Serpentine Chevrolet, got to give them a plug, for providing us a car to wrap it up, but all of these organizations pulled together and, and were able to, to complete that fundraiser. And it was, it was one of their most, Serpentine's most successful first-time fundraisers that they've had. So our organizations, they also share those attributes and display them. And we, we greatly appreciate what they do for us. Now, one of the things we're committing to, and I'm going to go back to the strategic plan, is, you know, it, it was interesting working with the Westlake Educational Foundation, sitting down and having their conversations we had about our purpose. That purpose is one. And we talked about this is what we fund and this is what we don't fund. Well, our organizations have been going above and beyond. They've been funding us in areas that they typically don't fund us and because we needed it and, and they've stepped up and helped us. One of the things that we're really going to be focused on as we move into the strategic planning is to make sure they're able to be true to their purpose. So if, if they typically don't fund a certain project or product or something like that and, and they, they do other things, we're going to make sure that we're able, we will step up and do our part as well. And we have plans in place to be able to do that because we really appreciate everything these support organizations have done for us. So we're looking forward to moving forward with that as well. This is my final, this is, this is something that to me is, is fun. And, and of course, being a child of the eighties, being able to throw them back to the future is something that is a great thing. And originally when we did this slide, we had a DeLorean on top, but we did remove it and, and added some pictures from old yearbooks. I think one is from the sixties, one's from the seventies, of course, the, the previous traditional or the previous name that was used before. And the reason that I'm putting these on the screen is when you look to the left at the 1954 Southwest Conference, you have Westlake, Bay Village, Rocky River, North Homestead, Fairview, Homestead Falls, Medina and Overland. When you look to the right, and actually it'd be 2021, Great Lakes Conference, it's a 12-team conference and we are in a 16 division. And the, the 16 division we're in is Westlake, Bay Village, Rocky River, North Homestead, Fairview and Malaria Haven. So five out of those six teams are teams that we were with since the fifties. And, and that is really cool. And their neighbors, there, there, there's the, you see the little brown jug up there. You know, there's the Westwood Cup with Rocky River. There's the Horns and Towns with North Homestead. So these, these neighborhood rivalries are, are going to continue and, and grow. So we are really, really excited about this move. Educationally, we're aligned as well with Rocky River, Bay Village and Lakewood in our Westshore Consortium. So this is going to be something where we can pull together athletically and academically. And, and really, I, I think this is just going to be a lot of fun. And, and I'm looking forward to this for next year. Again, continuing to move forward as, as a district. Final slide, you know, when, when you hear it, when, when they do the, the state of the union where you hear them say that state of the union is strong, our state of our schools is strong. It is through innovation, collaboration, purposeful planning. Our district is not only succeeding, but excelling through this challenging time. We offered superior instruction and continue moving in all aspects of our district. As we progress into next year, we'll continue to utilize the attributes from the Portrait of a Lifelong Learner in our planning process to be even better than we were before. We're pleased with what has been accomplished over the past year and we look forward to what we will accomplish in the future. Thank you for your continued support. I'll take any questions after that.
Does that have a comment? Thank you for putting all of that together. Portrait of a Lifelong Learner, I thought it was very well done. One of the things that we see at the university level, all students tend to know lots of items, you know, county economics, those types of courses, right, where they, where we hear from employers where they tend to lack is the soft skills. This addresses that and I think is extremely important. The other thing, Mr. Hopkins, a great presentation on our finances. I know we're fiscally responsible. I know we need to communicate that to, to all of our constituents, but we do everything we can to watch the pockets as it goes. So thank you there and I'll open it up to the rest of the board if they have any comments.
Overall, I thought it was, was fantastic presentation and like what you've commented on. I'm happy we actually waited on getting the Portrait of a Lifelong Learner done and strategic plan. I'm happy we actually waited on getting the Portrait of a Life long learner done and strategic plan. Not allowed it through the vast majority of COVID and what we're dealing with. Um you know, with other organizations that have been involved with, they're actually have to go well finished at an entire strategic planning process. Remember go back and redo it because so much has changed over the last year. So I think that's been very lucky with it. Um but no, it was really, I I mean, really, especially over this last year, this school year with the three models of all-in hybrid and virtual. There are schools that are just now trying to figure out how to do hybrid. And I've got friends that I've been in conversation with where, you know, here we are coming up on April and they're just got handed the plan Monday. And so the development of the plan, it's given us a flexibility, but also continuation of education throughout here. So it's it's a challenging year, but I think, you know, this overall is a successful year, even as a parent and child who's been in the middle for us. So it's been definitely some lessons from last year and then proven on the ability, it's great survey or presentation.
I agree with Dr. Hopkins' comments. Everything was pretty well presented, clear, precise. Want to say easy enough for everyone to kind of follow along with it versus a lot of consultants. Yeah, I thought the video was very nice, very compelling. And yeah, it's always good to hear about our finances. And I do think at times that they they're uh they're underrated. Or if we can kind of toot our own horn as against who will stand financially. Uh not just academics, you know, we are very competitive academically for our neighbors, but on that financial side of that, it's a dollar. I know Mary's student's very highly living in a time he has a lot of money. Yeah, it's one of those things that we really feel.
Just to chime in with with Todd's part of his presentation. Um it was not a small feat to me, our Moody's um standing because what were they adding this year that they hadn't before, like they were
Yeah, so one of the things, one of the reasons that Moody's is changing their rating um is uh I think it was Giasby sixty-eight um the governmental helm standing towards uh who is starting to correct as implement the idea of pushing pension liabilities down to local uh public entities. Uh and the challenge is, and I'll get on my my course for a second, I apologize, but the challenge is uh you have the school districts, you've heard about school districts throughout the country. I believe Detroit was one of them a few years ago about pension liabilities and their pension programs. Uh Westlake City Schools does not have an individual pension program for Westlake uh uh employees. What happens is in the state of Ohio, we participate in the school employee retirement system or the state teachers retirement system. Both of them are run by the state of Ohio and backed by the full faith and credit of the state of Ohio. Um if anyone should be carrying a pension liability, it should be the state of Ohio. But uh they have opted to uh Giasby has opted to to push that off of the state level and down to the local levels. So, you know, we have to carry, you know, in our fifty million dollar budget, we're carrying like two hundred, three hundred thou- or two hundred, three hundred million dollars in pension liabilities for the long-term pension fund. The way that the Ohio system uh works and and Moody's is is good about recognizing it, but it's still, they put it into their factoring is um our our pension program can be changed. And in fact, it was changed just a a handful of years ago. Uh wages were, you know, uh increased, uh payouts were decreased. You know, the pension system can change based on the state legislative action. Additionally, um the only changes that have historically been made to school districts is uh S T R S, S T R S doesn't come up to us and say, oh, here here's a bill for a hundred million euros, you know, by tomorrow. Uh what they do is they just increase the employer contribution or employee contribution, what the employee is paying or what we're paying uh uh our portion. Um they've not changed the employer portion in a large number of years. The employee portion was changed again uh within the last ten years or so. Uh they've updated updated at least the S T R S side. So I get frustrated because we're carrying that liability. It looks like we're holding, you know, negative assets uh because they pushed that uh liability to us. But it is a change that that's made. It isn't. It was a fight uh with Moody's. Uh I appreciate the work from the analysts um who we worked with um at Moody's, but uh we are very proud to to hold that.
I agree. It really makes no sense to do it because you get the the liability, but you you're not countering it with all of the uh the savings or
The assets they hold, yeah.
Yes, they have. So uh it is seems kind of meaningless.
As I uh look at the past year, some have compared the last year to really living through war. And uh the district really, uh as you mentioned, and I agree, is very strong after going through really a a very, very tough time. Um uh some will ask you questions with regard to slippage or drift. Uh but it comes to things one way and say academics. And I think you presented the argument that uh really as a district, we excel in this area. But as we, I I know you mentioned um teachers teaching in two locations that it was exhausting. Um and you you know that it's been exhausting, say, for students um for staff. Uh and I I know in the past, we've used a measuring stick to really assess that situation. That one of those measuring sticks in the past was moved through. Will we still use measuring sticks like that, like youth truth? And if we do, uh how will we continue to compete for that? And if we go into a different direction, what will be that?
So a couple of different things here. Uh I the people I have here, I have Dr. Morgan, Mrs. Maxwell, Mrs. Musselman. And and they have been working on uh the Extended Learning Plan. I always wanted to extend it, but but uh it's not the the Extended Learning Plan. We we have been monitoring how the students are doing compared to how they've done in the past. And they have a, they created a multi-faceted framework where it's not just a test score, it's more encompassing, socio-emotional, balanced in. So they've taken multiple uh variables into account. As my fact, you either you want to mention the different variables that you're you're looking at, the metrics you're looking at to measure who's eligible for extended.
Um if a student is currently receiving Title I services and can can be bringing six spray, are they in a specific subgroup? Um so we are using map data, grades, teacher input, counselor input. Um if there are any tenant issue, uh must support them. Um if they were disengaged throughout the year, if they were remote, so virtual, in-person. I'm sure I'm missing something.
For every circuit, he comes on services for childcare.
Oh, yeah. And the high school is a little bit different. Um because we did look at the students that may have failed the um first semester, so their credit to pitch in. So the high school is a little bit different than K A, but I'm very proud and cheering um out with all of you. I think that our approach is different and I do think that we are looking at the whole child, but not just one data point like a test score.
So that when it comes to youth truth, we have been using youth truth. We are not scheduled to use it this year. Uh but I will say, I'm glad you brought up youth truth because we, as part of our strategic planning, we've analyzed the past three years of um uh parents. So we have family data, we have student data, and we have staff data. And we've created themes that will help us as we get into our um strategic plan. But we do plan on coming back online on youth truth. It's been tough right now and and people are tested and surveyed to a certain level of exhaustion. We start our standardized testing tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow, of course.
So it's one of those where we we definitely respect the information we get and we value it and we'll continue to gather it. Um just not now. And and that's so we are committed to it, but we also don't want to. Some people, it it's exhausting. And what's interesting is something you said, the the mental exhaustion that we've heard from the hybrid teaching, um especially in our elementary schools, it's now been replaced with physical exhaustion by having a whole class of students in. So it it's something to where it's just been, it's been interesting and and how it's going.
But a positive, and I I inform Dr. Gagen, after a week of when we went back uh all-in for the elementary school, one of my friends uh who is a retired Westlake teacher and tutors, Avon Kids, Westlake Kids, she's a well-known tutor. She said she really noticed a difference in her Westlake students since they were back in school every day. She said they were, there was just a an excitement and engagement. They were very engaged. So I I think emotionally it made a big difference. Sure, the kids didn't go back to school. And she was also very impressed by the fact that uh Westlake teachers have their, when they got their shots, it was at the high school and they didn't have to travel over to Independence like the other. So what I was saying. I um the comment I have is I uh I know when we were down at um Columbus a couple of years ago, and the school systems were talking about Portrait of a Graduate. I love the way that we changed it to Portrait of a Life long learner. I think that just encompasses um so much more. The only thing that bothered me was that one slide that guys tend to really small. Do you notice that? I'm a visual learner and that just the one we're planning.
Oh.
Uh you use it as a plan.
Oh, it wasn't the video.
Okay, no. He's got this huge body and his head is like a puppy. And it's a very petty thing, but I had to.
I'll just continue on. And a lot of what you mentioned is to the credit of the district. And uh and again, I I can't help but use the analogy of a war situation. And uh tough situation, very tough situation. Just how uh the district's really navigated through well. Um I think uh really heard out, uh interested family, public, uh trying to work out a plan. I felt the district's plan was uh aggressive in a very good way as far as engaging students uh in a very, very meaningful way with staff, with Westlake uh plans. Uh which is uh great, great work, district. One thing, Dr. Gagen kind of related, uh we we had an opportunity to work on this week was working through uh Westshore and uh with an employment situation uh with a company. And um uh so did a little bit of a tangent when it uh when we bring up Westshore. Um but can you give us some indication with regard to Westshore and first our affiliation with Westshore? Uh how things are going with it?
Well, things are going, they're going well.
Yeah.
And and I remember it was last year, so it's tougher this year. So there's two different ways to look at it. The interest is there. Uh because as we got into last year, we were very concerned about the number of rising juniors that were enrolling because if we had that same number as these folks, as this cohort rose to seniors, if we had that same number, we would go over uh the number of students that we'd be able to fit in. So the interest is there. I I think that Westshore faced many of the same challenges, just in a different way as us. You know, my son does uh the the networking and cybersecurity at Westshore, so he participates there. And uh fortunately, he's in a program that lends itself to virtual in many ways. Um but when you have cooking, auto mechanics, construction trades, you know, some of these other uh uh programs, it's more of a challenge. So we haven't, they they deliver a really good product. We definitely have interest from our students. Um this year, I think, was difficult for them, especially more of the hands-on, in-person.
You didn't have space if we do have a whole work process going through there?
We do, but we have to make decisions because it's, you know, one of the things that that I'll just mention with Westshore that Mr. Hopkins brought up. You know, the majority of of schools around us do contribute uh to mills, to um two to three mills.
Two to three mills, yeah.
Two to three mills to either a joint vocational school or a career center. And and I think it's very appropriate that he adds those mills because we pay for it out of our general fund. So those thirty-three mills, we pay for Westshore out of that. And so it's not like we have a separate uh account for it. Um so we would have to expand it and we have to look at the contract that we have. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, thank you. Um next item up is treasurer's recommendations. Mr. Hopkins?
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Um tonight I have just four items before the board. Uh I'll briefly go through uh each of them. Uh we have permanent appropriations uh for A. Uh we are seeing an increase of appropriations uh here of about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Uh the two main uh significant costs of those are uh back earlier in this fiscal year, we did have some conversations. And the board has committed to using uh some general fund to purchase some technology equipment. So this has a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of some instructional technology equipment that we purchased. I think it's specifically Chromebooks, correct, actors again?
Four hundred and fifty-seven.
Four hundred and fifty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Four hundred and fifty-seven Chromebooks. So that's where you're seeing the increase there. You're also seeing a increase in uh uh the operations and maintenance facilities and purchase services of forty-two thousand five hundred. This is actually, and normally when we code this in here, but I've I've asked for it to be coded this year. Uh this is a nurse who's hired through the E S C, okay? Uh specific because of COVID, we added an additional nurse. Uh I'm asking uh Mr. Kosovar to track all of our 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 expenses due to COVID, so we've uh maintained them within his account so that he and his administrative assistant, Lisa Zuck, uh can get a better grasp on the COVID-specific expenditure. So uh those are the the two main pieces, the vast majority of the costs of increasing appropriations there. Uh I do have on um a handful of then-and-thous. Uh we have some, you know, mental health services. Uh we have some more desk dividers that we needed to get as we've gone into all-in. Internet fee, uh we didn't have a P O for the entire year, so it's like half a year there. Uh consulting services for the school there, so like we just spoke about. Again, and I'm just going to point out, trying to be transparent, the reason you see that this amount doesn't match what is on the uh uh purchase, I'm sorry, on the appropriation measure is this amount is then-and-now is only if you've been billed for it before we had the P O in place. Now that we have the appropriations taken care of, we'll have a P O in place to cover the rest of the year. Um you know, so it's only about half of it that falls under a then-and-now. Uh we have some uh cons uh food supplies that we needed uh for our cafeteria program, I B. And then uh uh college credit plus textbooks um that you see on there. Uh college credit plus is a fantastic program, great opportunity, you know, for students and we do encourage participation in it. There is an expense to the board. Uh you know, it's not a, you know, we often talk about it from a parent's perspective uh or a student's perspective is that, you know, assuming you successfully, of course, there's no cost to that. Well, there's no cost to the the student or the parents, it's the cost to the Board of Education as we are required to pay for uh the class itself as well as any required textbooks and materials. Um uh so we do have some weird oddities in there, but uh that's some of the books we need to buy for college credit.
Can I have the question now or do we need to have the motion and the discussion?
Probably if we we do it under our discussion, we'd be more appropriate.
Okay.
Um I do have a a quick one on here. This is a a premium change fund of a hundred dollars at the high school. As we've had some people paying uh some of their fees at the high school, they're choosing to do it in person. Uh uh students bring money in. Um that's obviously, you know, we want to have some change available, you know, quarters, singles, fives, things like that. So I am asking a hundred dollars uh to be used at the uh high school. This will be accounted for in return at the end of the school year, but uh I do, we do request board approval on that. The last letter D and and uh I will ask for this one to be approved separately, okay? This is uh annually, we're required by the uh end of March to file uh our tax rate uh certification with uh the County Audits Office. And so uh I just spent a whole bunch of time talking about our uh millage and things like that as we went through state of schools there. And now I'm coming to you and I'm asking for sixty-six point seven mil. And now I'm coming to you and I'm asking for sixty-six point seven mills. And, uh, why does that not add up? And again, let's briefly talk about that. When we have a tax rate resolution, okay, a tax rate resolution is going to list out, um, our total tax rates, okay? Again, think of it as this is what was passed by our voters, okay? So we have an inside millage, that's five point eight mills, that matter changes, okay? Um, but all of our other outside mills, which is outside the Ohio Constitution, meaning that you can't levy it without a vote. So your voted notes there, okay, falls under and says, this is what's passed. And House Bill nine-twenty that was passed back in the seventies says that as your property values increase, your millage decreases. And that becomes now known as your effective tax rate. So we have our voted tax rates and we have our effective tax rate. So even though this is, uh, requesting the board approve our, um, full voted tax rate, um, this is not what we collect off of. We don't collect sixty-six point seven mills. If we did, we'd be having a different conversation, but, um, you know, we're roughly about half of that at thirty-three point six, uh, thirty-three point six-four mills, because as property values have increased, those rates have dropped according to Ohio laws. So, um, but I do need, in order for us to collect, uh, taxes next school year, um, I would need the board to approve this one or two. So if it so pleases the board, I'd ask for, uh, A, B, and C to be combined, uh, and then I would ask that you do done some.
Uh, is there a motion to, um, for items four, A, B, and C?
So, second.
Discussion?
Yes. Question. The eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for IB.
Yes.
Because I was under the impression that, um, with COVID and everything that that was kind of put on hold. Certainly last school year and this school year and the discussion we had with our committee about IB, I mean, we didn't really take a vote on that.
And what we're doing is, uh, so what that is, my understanding, and, uh, is that we're maintaining our membership until we're not, right? And, and so that decision hasn't been made. It's something that, you know, we believe will be part of our strategic planning, um, to determine how we would move forward with that. And I think if we didn't pay it, then it would kind of be like a, like a way to say, oh, well, we didn't pay our bills, so I guess we're not doing it. It's like, you know what I mean? So it's, we, we're, we're committed to it till we're not. If, if we are gonna stick with it, then we're still members. If we're not gonna stick with it, then we wouldn't, uh, be up.
How, how soon do you anticipate that we will be making that decision?
I don't know. We're, we're looking at, um, early April, um, for our strategic planning sessions. So I would say by mid-May, we should more clarity on which I would go.
Another discussion? No further discussion.
Wazinski moved, uh, seconded by Kurnat. Wazinski?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Tanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yeah.
Stone?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion for treasurer's item four B? Or D, sorry? Discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Moved by Tanukin, seconded by Kraft. Tanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Wazinski?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stone?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Next item up is superintendent's recommendation.
Great, thank you, Dr. Stone. Uh, jumping into five A, resolution to accept gifts and donations. We have a donation from Anthony Latino Real Estate, uh, donating fifty dollars to the twenty-twenty-one class at Westlake High School. Sue Hoffman donated a hundred dollars to the class of twenty-twenty-one at Westlake High School. Joseph Kraft donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the class of twenty-twenty-one, uh, at Westlake High School. George N. Orsolia Lesko donated a Craylon Ender three-D printer valued at two hundred and six dollars to the Technology and Engineering Department of Westlake High School. Catherine McGinty donated fifty dollars to the Nick Massa Memorial Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. Norton Corporation donated five hundred dollars to the class of twenty-twenty-one. Q Lab Corporation donated five hundred dollars to the class of twenty-twenty-one. And Ron and Donna Stevenson donated twenty-five clipboards to Westlake Elementary School. Thank all of you for your donations and support of our schools. Letter five B is, uh, resolution uh, that will lift the one point five GPA eligibility requirement for the remaining, uh, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one athletic seasons. Uh, as we have gone through these athletic seasons, we've done this for fall and winter. And as we're looking at spring, I, I think it's one of those where we, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, but we're not out yet. And, and so what I have on here is a recommendation to, uh, do for spring, what, which, what we did for winter. Spring, I have to tell you, is, is one of those seasons, it's, it's the only season we really have that passed the complete season. You know, this last year. And so I think that did not, um, provide the, the same type of leverage or, or leniency for the, the spring, uh, that we did with the other sports, I think could be a disadvantage to some kids. Uh, letter five C. So five B and C are some adjustments based on, um, you know, what we've been going through, uh, this year. This is a resolution to, um, uh, reduce the number of community server, service hours from, uh, sixty to thirty, which allows the high school administration to raise the hours. Hand it up, even though my son got a lot from the same concept at the ball. You know, that's, that everybody gets it up. Um, we have, uh, some resolution, uh, resolutions to make some adjustments to the district twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, calendar. There are, uh, a few changes that need to be placed on there. Letter D are stipends for, uh, what's your, what is called OTES two point O, which is the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. It's the new, um, uh, program that we have to use. We have a lot of teachers who are helping us develop that. And then we have, uh, some stipends recommended for some parent events. And letter F, letter G is approving, um, activity supplemental contract for, uh, DIS strings director and uh, DIS band director. Uh, these are a little bit later. I believe these are later because they're coming more back online, uh, and being able to do more. We have a resolution to approve a home instructor for a student who needs home instruction. And then we're amending, uh, a previous resolution, uh, to change, uh, Joshua Gannon's start date from March third to March first. Letter M, uh, these last ones are going to be different agreements that we have. This is, uh, a, a primary service agreement with our Educational Service Center. And letter N is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding uh, for, as Mr. Hopkins was referring to, college credit plus. This one is with, um, Chi-Haw Community College. And then the final one is requesting, uh, that you approve the resolution, um, for an interagency, uh, inter-agency, uh, agreement within Chi-Haw County as well. That's what I And you know what? I would do five A separate, five A separate. Yeah, and, and unless there's any others that folks would like to pull separately.
Yes.
Okay, which one? After, right? Oh, I see. You know what? Yeah. Yeah, that's fair. Yep. Actually, logging in, because I don't see the, the certain content. Okay, uh, is there a motion for superintendent's recommendation five A?
Discussion? Other than, once again, thanks to all those who were in, we appreciate that. Like Mitch Kraft from, uh, two of my sons through our class of twenty-twenty-one. And everyone else.
Moved by Tanukin, seconded by Wazinski. Tanukin?
Yes.
Wazinski?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stone?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Next up would be, will combine, uh, superintendent's recommendations. Five B is in Boyd through five E is in Edward. So, second. Discussion?
I just think things like five B and five C show the, uh, compassion and empathy for, uh, our students in the district.
Do you have any idea how many students are involved in, uh, the eligibility?
I'm gonna say it's, uh, less than ten.
In my understanding.
Depending. It was harder, we, we didn't put that in because it was harder when students were virtual to have to do something like that. So we're, we're doing it on case-by-case basis. We're, we're looking at the council to reach something that's appropriate. We did a blanket something and the blanket was really hard to cover.
But I agree, it's good to, to show the compassion and empathy of changing that.
I'm sorry, I don't remember. Was, was this the, would it be E recommendation or was it?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Hopkins?
Moved by Kraft, seconded by Tanukin. Kraft?
Yes.
Tanukin?
Yes.
Wazinski?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stone?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
We have a motion for superintendent's recommendation five F. Discussion? Hearing done? Roll call?
Moved by Kurnat, seconded by Wazinski. Kurnat?
Yes.
Tanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Wazinski? Stone?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Motion for superintendent's recommendations five G through five N. Second. Discussion? That's, that's, that's fair. Five G through five O. Second. Discussion? Hearing done? Roll call?
Moved by Kraft, seconded by Tanukin. Kraft?
Yes.
Tanukin?
Yes.
Wazinski?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stone?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Next item up is board items. Does the board have anything?
Comments, I continue, uh, since I'm in that area, I believe, but just a lot of comments and questions about Holly Lane. Not that we're gonna decide anything tonight, uh, but if you have a vision, uh, for Holly Lane, uh, what might that be and if, if and when, uh, that might involve, uh, maybe that building coming down? Uh, would we do anything similar to what we, uh, did say for, uh, Dover Elementary with bricks and things like that?
Yes, and, and yes, because one of the things we wanna do is spotlight each of those buildings, um, uh, prior to them coming down, respecting the history. We would do bricks. Another thing that we are, uh, looking at, um, at Dover Elementary School, which was done for the Redbird Building, was to have a stone with black on it. That, that, it won't be like a historical marker, but it'll, you know, on something just to recognize that it was there. Yes, and Holly Lane, at least in my opinion, is the last, you know, for us, because that's probably one of the buildings that's in, um, better shape. And Mass is really bad.
Right, I, I, I agree. And it's, you know, it's interesting how rumors were, uh, it's interesting about buildings that we plan on building there, you know, uh.
Can you share one?
The, the school's gonna put up apartment buildings and rent them out. I must have missed that one.
That is, that, that is something that's not on the radar.
I have to say though, going past Dover, I think, uh, with the building down, um, it, it just, I think it looks great. And it just looks much larger now. So it'll be interesting to see how we do the trap.
So when we talk about rumors, what, what's, what's interesting with rumors, and, and you mentioned Dover Elementary, is, um, I did receive, uh, uh, the Blue Room Home Reach Out, or I don't know who owns that now, but you know, the and, you know, they had heard the rumor that they heard was that we were tearing down DIS. And we didn't want the property or something, so then we wanted Yeah, so, and, and, uh, because I was so confused, I'm like, why, why Dover Elementary School property if we were there? So no, we, we, the, the rumors spread very, very rapidly and, and
As I think about, uh, Mrs. Wazinski, what you mentioned, you know, how, how good it looks. Something I do notice, and maybe it's just me being me, uh, but just driving by properties and seeing, for example, a dumpster uh, in, in front of a building supposed to be hidden somewhere. Those that are for recycling, and I know it makes it very apparent, um, just, just some, just wanna throw that on the table, just thoughts to, do we put those dumpsters in another area to make, uh, our properties look
Did we sell the learning cottage, as the Dover staff called it there, rather than the trailer?
It just came down with the building.
It came down with the building, okay. Oh, yeah, I spent a lot of time in here, uh, you know, tutoring kids and stuff, but, um, and they were actually quite large. I was very surprised the first time I went in and that, and there were the two classrooms. And, and they were nice, but of course I thought they were and I saw them from their own, you always hate to see those.
I do have a piece of vinyl I'm saving at home, but if you want a piece of it.
From the learning cottage?
I will, uh, I'll make a quick note with spring in the air. Uh, I was able to attend, uh, Westlake's very first home, uh, scrimmage, uh, for baseball today. And, uh, I want to express my appreciation on behalf of a lot of the parents um, for the commitment that the board has made, uh, for the improvements. Uh, they're very well received by the folks that were over there, not just, uh, the people that were more enthusiastic about trying to make changes. But to everyone, you know, including some comments from some Rock River folks who were hosting over here today. So my appreciation to the board, uh, and support of it. And then obviously, the small group of, uh, folks on staff, including Mr. Kosovar, Mr. Hopkins, and Mr. Sipulon, who diligently, uh, worked very hard to make sure we could get, uh, what was kind of a vision into a plan to reality in a short period of time. Even with all the crappy snow that, uh, we had here. So, uh, kudos to all you guys, much appreciated. And, uh, I'm sure this will be a great season for more baseball and so on.
Did we sell the drainage issue there with the water or?
Could prove difficulty.
Prior, it's not perfection.
That's true.
And you have had a chance to walk over there. It really is quite lovely. It's, you know, it's a thing that's so close. So, you know, even in the, when the snow was all melting, yeah, there was some water, but it was not like what it's been in the past.
Although, being over there today, uh, before I came here, and I know there's, we're already working on the, the, the next step for padding. It was, it was interesting if the ball got past the catcher, uh, the padding hadn't been put up yet. It was, uh, God knows the ball, when it kind of came right back in the pitcher. And they just bent down and picked it up. Another time it ricocheted off to the right. It was, we were joking that if you were the catcher or if you were the umpire, you needed back protection. Just, but I know it's going up very shortly, so it's to hopefully meet that, those potential challenges. Yeah, it was amazing how quickly they can replicate a lot, a flat piece of paint and stuff.
I walked by today. I looked, I went walking through just to see how it was looking, draining and everything, so. It's, it's better. It, it's better than, you know, still on the softball field on the first base side, and so it just, it just doesn't get sunned is the issue.
It's progress.
And that's it.
One other, uh, one quick comment. I really, uh, I'm not sure if you all know, uh, House Bill sixty-seven was signed by Governor Delancey. Um, and I really would like to thank Mrs. Maxwell and Mrs. Wilson. They were, uh, meeting with Dr. Collins, who's our state foreign education rep. Then in turn worked with our Ohio Senator, Teresa Pidor, and got some amendments moving in and helped with pathways to graduation. So there were some things that happened today that, thank you.
Awesome. Any other board items or comments? Hearing none, next item up is executive session. The board will adjourn to executive session to discuss appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official. Please note that no decisions will be made during this time. And afterwards, we will adjourn executive session and return to regular session. Are there needed any motions? So, second. Discussion? Mr. Hopkins, roll call?
Adjourned into executive session at 7:30 PM. Moved by Kraft, seconded by Fanukin. Kraft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Wazinski?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole.
Yeah.
Motion carries.